Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And please stand for the flag slide if you can. I'm trying to get the flag here. Hold on one second. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
To the Republic.
Yes. A nation of God.
Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. And we'll have roll call. Will be clerk please call roll?
Counselor Bullen.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Crizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Campus absent. Counselor Stouter.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have the consent calendar. We have the agenda from the Lebanon City Council for May 13th. Tonight, and the agreements 2020 ODOT Service Transportation Fund Agreement. Board minutes from the Planning Commission February 19th. A council minutes of April 8th, 2020 regular session. An easement, the Mill Street Public Utility Easement. And liquor licenses, annual renewals.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Moving on, we've got a few proclamations. I'll ask you to. Bear with me for. First up is Poppy Day proclamation. Whereas the city of Lebanon supports the Lebanon American Legion's designation of May 22nd. As Poppy Day in Lebanon to honor our fallen. And whereas the city of Lebanon recognizes the importance of honoring those who have worn our nation's uniform. And whereas as a nation of peace, we must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died. And the red poppy was designated as a symbol of sacrificed lives on the battlefields. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt. Through distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore, I Mayor Paul R. Zeez hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2020. As Poppy Day and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. In the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. Next up is Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas with the effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions. Can recover and leave full productive lives. And whereas each of us has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support. Prevention efforts. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 22nd. May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lebanon. And call upon the community to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps we can take to protect our mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for those in need. And we have another one here. National Police Week, May 10th through the 16th. And Peace Officers Memorial Day is May 15th. Which would be Friday. Whereas members of Lebanon Police Department playing a central role safeguarding the lives and property of the citizens of Lebanon. Whereas it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities. Of their police department and the members of our police department recognize their duty. To serve the people by safeguarding life and property. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year. Resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Now therefore, I Mayor Paul R. Zeez declare May 10th. Through the 16th, 2020 as Police Week in Lebanon and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community. And in communities across the nation. I further call upon all citizens of Lebanon to observe Friday, May 15th. As National Peace Officers Memorial Day. In honor of all officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And thank you Chief for your department and all the hard work that you guys and gals do.
Thank you.
The 111th Annual Strawberry Festival. Now, I know we're not having the regular strawberry festival. However, we have a proclamation because we've got a little bit of an alternative. To work with the whole COVID issue this year. Whereas 2020 marks the 111th anniversary of the Lebanon Strawberry Festival in which we welcome thousands of visitors. To our community normally. And whereas the strawberry festival is a citywide event. And recognition of this event is fitting and appropriate. And whereas due to the COVID-19 pandemic and social distancing requirements. The activities for this year have been altered. And whereas. The community has taken on new ways to continue the celebration through a modified celebration. And whereas the community of Lebanon can show their support and celebrate Strawberry Festival Week. By decorating their homes and businesses during the week of June 1st through the 7th. Now therefore, I Mayor Paul R. Zeez do hereby proclaim June 1st through June 7th as Lebanon Annual Strawberry Festival. A time for the city of Lebanon to show their fondness and memories of the strawberry festival. I solicit the cooperation of all members of the community. In honoring our strawberry queen, her court, and this year's theme of roaring strawberries. Okay. Got that taken care of. Next up, we have public comment. We received one public comment ahead of time. And the city council was emailed that copy right before the meeting. Did all city council get a copy of that? Okay. It's your email. And I will go ahead and read. Excuse me. I will go ahead and read the comment. I am Shirley Bird. I'm the founder of the nonprofit organization Family Assistance and Resource Center Group. We work with people experiencing homelessness and housing instability in Lynn County, mostly East Lynn County. I've been trying to follow the CDC COVID-19 protocol for people experiencing homelessness. This includes the shelter in place plan. We have sought out faith partners in the community that are willing to work with us and provide an outdoor space for four to six tents. We are able to provide portable restrooms, hand washing stations, and trash disposal. We would be able to do checks and health assessments in one place. And provide food and water to eliminate the need for guests to roam around the community looking for resources. We've had two churches in Lebanon agree. One church is not acceptable due to zoning ordinances. The second church is in the correct zoning area. I have been told that I must apply for a conditional use permit and follow the same steps. If it is going to be a permanent shelter. This is expensive and untimely. I ask that you please waive the fee and let us proceed in sheltering the highly vulnerable population to offer a safe alternative. Or offer a safe alternative. We are also going to be testing for COVID-19 in Lebanon homeless population. And I would like to know what the city's policy is on isolation while awaiting test results if you have no home or place to isolate to. If we have a positive test result in Lebanon within the homeless population. What are the city's plans for quarantining for that person? Can the city offer to pay motel expenses in such a case? I hope that Lynn County has no positive results. If we do find one in the homeless population. It won't be one. It will be happening clusters. I work with people experiencing homeless daily. They have suffered more than most of us during the crisis. I urgently ask the city to put prevention measures in place. Make a plan for post-testing isolation. And to provide a quarantine solution for any homeless that test positive for COVID-19. And that's Shirley Bird Director, Executive Director of the Family Assistance and Resource Center Group. Okay, with that, I would like to turn it over to Ron and our Community Development Director Kelly. To maybe talk a little bit about this and some of the work that they've looked at and things that they've talked about. And maybe the chief can pipe in on this too at some point.
Sure, thank you Mayor. So I think it was earlier this week or sometime last week, we were contacted by Ms. Bird regarding her camping option. From a land use perspective, we looked at compatible uses within our development code. And in the development code, it identifies in the low-density residential zone that temporary or emergency shelters. Are prohibited. But in other residence, all the other residential zones, the temporary and emergency shelters would be permissible. Through the application of a conditional use permit. Now, as Ms. Bird identified, that permit is $1,500. It would take approximately two to three months to get to a planning commission public hearing. And it's obviously, as you all know, a discretionary permit that would be reviewed by the planning commission. To determine whether or not the proposal meets the decision criteria and will be based off of that and public comments as well. That is the most formal option that is available. The one key thing to note is, as Ms. Bird indicated, the conditional use permit runs with the land, which means that there's no time limit that we can place on it. And so this is then a temporary consideration. And if I may, whoever's mics open and typing, if we could please mute it. For alternatives that we looked at, we've been in regular communication recently with Lynn County Health. And also working with the governor's office and looking through the CARES Act and what are the guidance. Documents that they put together regarding homelessness. The best option is if they are tested awaiting results or have been tested positive for it. Is to identify a location such as a hotel room. Where they can be isolated and fully separated from the population. They'll have their own sanitation facilities. They'll have their own place to shelter and it would be fully removed from the population. That's kind of the cream of the crop option. We haven't done a significant amount of research or gone in depth in the proposal for the campsite. We were identifying whether or not that would be a feasible application process for this point in time. But also if there were other more feasible options that the city council might be interested in. One little piece of information, through the county, we have been notified that the Lynn County Commissioners. Are finalizing a contract for a hotel in the county that would be providing. This exact service is for people that have the ability to get tested but don't necessarily have the ability to separate or isolate. And so that is a function that is starting to be provided through the county. And so it's at the council's discussion of if they like any of these alternatives or to provide direction as you see fit.
Okay, the other thing, go ahead and have Chief talk a little bit about it because we want to talk about the, some of the safety issues on the camp concept. Because I know you and I had talked Chief about that. And I just want some concerns or, you know, enforcement, those kinds of issues that might come up.
Yeah, so when it comes to a campsite on a private property or property entity such as a church and whatnot, you're going to run into all kinds of issues. One being that it's a private property. They're going to have to go through an eviction process at the end of this to get these individuals off the property that are camping. And not to mention, they're going to be in tents. You have sanitation issues. And all kinds of other issues that come along with camps such as this. You know, my question is, why did it, why did Ms. Bird wait so long to start looking into this? I mean, we've been in it for about two months now. You know, why now is she coming forward with these kinds of issues? And I'm not sure if anyone has that answer. Other than an own agenda to obtain or get a homeless camp or a homeless shelter. And that's my opinion, but I see a whole lot of issues with allowing a campsite. You're going to take up a lot of law enforcement. Time and energy going through these camps to ensure there are safety things, safety precautions that are going on.
Thanks Chief. And thank you Kelly. Counselor comments? Karen, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yes, I actually would agree with the chief. I definitely have concerns of opening up and if there's no way to limit then, that there would be like a limited duration time. Then in effect, we would be voting on that this would be a permanent camp. In hearing that the Lynn County is trying to come up with an option with the hotel, I personally think that is the way that we need to go. We live in Lynn County. And let them sort of take that lead instead of us individually trying to create a system that I think. Then we might not be able to get out of, especially if we're talking about private property piece. You absolutely have to go through the eviction process and it is very long. And in the meanwhile, you know, like the chief was talking about, you got the sanitation issues. It just really can get bad pretty fast and then very difficult to get rid of a situation like that.
Okay, thank you Karen. Anyone else want to mention something?
I'd echo that. County Health has been leading the way on this for the city and the local health community the entire time. And I think it would be just prudent to follow county health's lead on this. And if they are working to come up with some sort of county solution. Then I think that would be prudent and appropriate. I have the same concerns that Chief Stevenson does with sanitation. And the conglomeration of a makeshift tent city right in the middle of. The core of the city, right near one of our busiest intersections. I see a lot of potential for. For impact on the pedestrian traffic, regular traffic. And also all the other dangers and issues that Chief raised. So I think it's best for us to stay neutral and wait for the direction from the county and follow their lead on this.
Thank you Jason. Another counselor, like to.
I also agree that we should follow the county's lead on it, but I'd also like to know, do we have an idea of how many homeless folks we're talking about? Or what's our population look like at this time? Chief, do you have?
Yeah, I'll let the chief talk on that, but we've asked and there is no number. They don't have a number to give us. At least that organization doesn't. But I'll let the chief expound on that because I know that they've done quite a bit of work in that area.
Yeah, so you know, the numbers are pretty low as far as the homeless population goes. We've been out and about handing out all kinds of packages for individuals who we are finding camping. We're just not finding a whole lot that are out there. And the ones that we do come across are already sheltering in place as it speaks. And we do as much as we can to follow up with individuals out there, see if they need any help, assistance and whatnot. But I can tell you, and it's kind of surprising actually, that the numbers that we did have in the past were just not seen in today's, in today's world. So for what it's worth.
Okay. Rebecca?
I would just echo kind of what everybody's saying as far as the concerns. And Lynn County Health just makes the most sense. If they're already solving this problem. It seems really silly for us to solve it in some other way that impacts the city negatively. So.
Okay. Anyone else? Got to go to page two here. Don't see anybody.
This is Counselor Furlough.
Oh, go ahead, Robert.
I agree. The county has sent a letter to the governor outlining their plan for reopening and dealing with the situation. So we, I agree with everyone else. We need to follow the Lynn County plan.
Okay. Chief, did you have something? Did I?
No, more or less. I was just gonna, you know, kind of repeat what everyone's saying. But my question is. When we do offer services to the individuals who we come across, a lot of them don't want to take it and a lot of them don't want to go anywhere. So my question is, if we do have a homeless individual who does test positive for the COVID. And they refuse to go, I don't believe we can force them to go anywhere. So I just wanted to make sure that that was known.
That's a good point. Okay, any other comments? Make sure he has a chance. Okay, with that, we did not receive any other written public comments ahead, so.
Mayor Aziz.
Yes.
I actually, this is Cassie Cruz with the Downtown Association. I actually did had sent one in and I was given the link at the last moment.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead Cassie. Sorry, I didn't know you were there.
That's okay. It's just the downtown update as usual.
Okay.
Something. Yeah, absolutely. So I kind of want to let you guys know, I had not been able to, hello everyone, first of all. I have not been able to tell everybody kind of what the uptick has been year over year. And I usually, we usually do that. And to kind of give everyone an idea of the city's investment in LDA, what that return in the season, return on their investment. Is, I just want to let everyone know, and I'm really happy about this, as despite the challenges LDA had in the beginning of 10 hours and then moved to 32 hours. We actually had a total of. Went over the 24,000 that we brought in just in volunteer hours alone to 30, just over 37,000 a year. We went up 66% year over year in the return on investment, just in volunteer hours. So I want to show that was an awesome thing, accomplishment. We saw more people come out for the Community Cleanup Day that we have, that we have before Strawberry Festival. And just a lot of our other events. We also saw an uptick in people coming downtown. And shopping as we extended First Fridays into December. We actually had a 71% growth on attendance. And just to kind of give you guys an idea, so 2018, we had about 400 people. 2019, we had about 560. And in March alone with the happy birthday Dr. Seuss. We had 300 individuals downtown for that one event. So in one month alone, we already had, we almost met the goal of 2018. So that was awesome. So I kind of wanted to give you guys those updates. We've seen growth in our, mostly in our volunteer efforts. And then of course, participation within our concerts. We had attained the Summer Bands and Brews Concert Series, as you all know. LDA two concert series. And of course, sadly, with everything that's going on. We're shifting our focuses and having to obviously cancel our summer concert series. But then hopefully, as we open up, of course, being innovators. Hopefully, maybe we can see what a winter concert series might look like if we could pull something like that off. And what that might look like to give people something to do. But that's way down the line. So. And kind of give everyone else a little update, the LebanonStrong.com fundraiser is going quite well. Still check our social media for free giveaways on that. And then also let you know, shift in focus, I spoke to this last month. About the Economic Vitality Committee coming up with what's called a space walk. This was in turn supposed to be done in person, but now with the new COVID life, this will be held online. And we will be utilizing, the thought is hopefully, we'll be able to start with the Stainthorpe Building to kind of show the different vacant buildings we have downtown. To give buyers and investors an opportunity to see what Lebanon has. And then possibly get a, not possibly, the idea is to have a panel of contractors to be able to give their insight on the building as they are seeing it for the first time as well. So we're looking hopefully to have that rolled out by the end of this month. So that will hopefully definitely bring in some more economic development within our downtown. But I think that is primarily the, what I wanted to kind of go over and just say. Your guys' 10,000, the city's $10,000 investment for just the 2019 year has turned into $39,709.25. So we are able to leverage that and bring more up to the community. So thank you for those opportunities. And we're looking forward to keep going into next year and beyond.
Okay, thank you Cassie. Was there any questions? Okay, see none. Thank you Cassie. And we'll move on to the first item. And the first item up is a public hearing. And I'll be presiding over tonight's public hearing in the city council. The purpose of this hearing is to invite the public testimony regarding the city of Lebanon applying for the Community Development Block Grant for the Dev Northwest Housing Rehab Program. We'll call the meeting open at 6:24 PM. And has the city recorder received any written testimony? And.
No comments were received.
Okay, thank you. And the Community Development Director Kelly will provide her staff report now. Thank you.
Thank you sir and good evening again. So before you tonight is a resolution to authorize the middle of a community development block grant application. And to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dev Northwest. As the sub-grantee for the housing rehabilitation grant. And instead of hearing me talk about it, I will turn it over to Liza Newcomb. Who is with Dev Northwest and she will be the administrator of the grant and the application procedure. And so I will let her carry on with the conversation.
Thank you Kelly. Everybody hear me okay? Yeah, okay. So I want to make one, one little addition. This is the Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Partnership Grant Program. So it's not really the Dev Northwest. We are the sub-grantee for the program. But it's the Lynn County Partnership that is going to be the oversight really of the program. The city of Lebanon would be the sponsoring city for this application. And there are additional funds available this year, which were available last year and we did take advantage of that. There's an additional 100,000 that we can use to give grants to homeowners in mobile home parks or manufactured home parks. And those are grants. They're not loans. So the money doesn't come back to be used again, the way that the other loan funds do. But it's a, so it's kind of up to the city council whether you want to apply for. The 400,000 that is the original rehabilitation loan program. Or 500,000 including the additional 100,000. And I apologize, I am not doing well speaking. I injured my ribs last week. And it's really hard for me to talk. So Praveet Olson, who's our chief operating officer. Has very kindly agreed to read the entire public notice aloud in my place. Thanks Praveet.
Well, that's a trooper. Thank you for doing that, even the introduction. I appreciate it Lisa.
Good evening. I'm going to read the information about the CDBG program. So the city of Lebanon is eligible to apply for 2020 Community Development Block Grant. From the Oregon Business Development Department. Community Development Block Grant Funds come from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. Approximately 12 million will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan cities and counties in 2020. The maximum grant that a city or county can receive for housing rehabilitation or repair is 500,000. The city of Lebanon is preparing an application for 2020 Community Development Block Grant. From the Oregon Business Development Department for the Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Partnership. In rural Lynn County, which includes incorporated cities of Lebanon, Brownsville, Halsey, Harrisburg, Sio. Sodaville, Sweet Home, Tangent, Waterloo, and all unincorporated areas of Lynn County. It is estimated that the proposed project will benefit at least 30 persons of whom 100 will be, 100% will be low or moderate income. The purpose of this hearing is for the Lebanon City Council to obtain citizen views and to respond to the questions and comments about. Community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons. As well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with a Community Development Block Grant Project and the proposed project. The state of Oregon has identified mobile home parks as a critical housing option for low and moderate income homeowners. A new program to support these owners has been initiated this year. CDBG funds in the amount of 100,000, in addition to the 400,000 for the loan program. Are now available to low and moderate income manufactured homeowners who reside in mobile home parks. These funds are to be distributed as grants, not loans. They can be used for homes built after 1977. And can only be used for up to 50% of the real market value of the manufactured house. We expect to help these residents replace roofs, install accessibility aids, and repair plumbing and electrical issues. More information about Oregon Community Development Block Grants and the proposed projects are available for public view. City of Lebanon Finance Office during regular office hours. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result of the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement. And provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate, moderate income housing which is demolished or converted to another use will be replaced.
Okay, thank you very much. Now with that information. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the project of the city's performance? And we did not receive anybody as of 5 o'clock. And I just want to double check with our clerk to make sure that did not happen.
That is correct. No comments were received.
Okay, thank you. And if there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition, it would be the same thing since we received no comments. So the public hearing is hereby closed at. So the public hearing is hereby closed at 6:30 PM. At this point, I'll have the city attorney read the title of the resolution.
Resolution of 2020-03, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Dev Northwest as sub-grantee.
Okay. I'll take a, a motion.
I move to, I move to approve. Or is there discussion?
Oh, I, I apologize. Is there any discussion or questions on this at all? Yeah, go ahead, Rebecca.
Well, um, Liza, you mentioned us having a choice of whether to add that 100,000, uh, on, on the end. And I'm just wondering why we would not do that. I mean, it feels like, of course we would.
I, I feel that way too, but some, some people don't want to see us giving grants out to people in parks because there's no return on it. Um, you know, no financial return. In my mind, keeping people safe in their homes is the return that we want for everybody. And I don't think there's any reason not to take that, uh, mobile home, but it, it's an option for the city.
Is that included in the, um, in the, what you read Trey, the, uh, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to scroll down to the, the actual agreement.
It looks like it authorizes for us to submit the application, but it doesn't give any specifics on that extra money.
Okay. Uh, so I, my motion stands. I move to approve and I, and I guess I move to approve us applying for the full 500,000.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. And who is the second?
Karen.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded into pre-resolution 202003. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. The resolution passes. Thank you, Liza. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Okay. And we will close the, oh, we did close the public hearing. Thank you. And regular session now, uh, approval of city contract, city attorney contract. Let me get to my page here. Okay. The previous contract renewal was approved by the city council in April of 2017. Contract period was from May 10th, 2014 through May 9th, 2020. Proposed contract renewal is attached for the Morley Thomas Law Firm LLC, as well as a red line version showing the proposed changes. The staff recommendation of mine is to, uh, move, uh, to approve the contract as written. I worked with Trey and, um, Ron and we've gone through this. If you have any comments or questions, this would be the time we could talk about it.
I guess I would just like to, well, I'd, I'd like to see us, uh, continue on with our contract with Trey. I think he does, uh, well for us and represent us and he's always available when, you know, when I know and I have a question, he gets back to me right away and I appreciate that. So I'd like to see it continue.
I agree. And I also like the addition of the extra services and looking at some of our, um, our laws that, that need to be looked at and just some of the things, uh, dotting the i's and crossing the t's and just kind of clean up. So, uh, and being available for staff. So, uh, Trey and your staff, we appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do want to just introduce, uh, you know, uh, they were complimenting me on being available and, and, and praise, uh, the city attorney, but, uh, honestly, uh, it's become much easier since I have a, a staff that, uh, makes it incredibly easy for me. So I wanted to introduce, I wanted them to be here just so everybody could meet the people that helped me and helped, uh, helped the office, um, provide services to the city. So with me today is, uh, Desiree, my legal assistant, who keeps me, uh, organized and makes sure I show up usually on time and at the right place and basically runs my entire schedule during the day. Um, she's incredible. Most of you have started copying her on emails and you probably haven't realized that, uh, uh, not nearly as many things fall through the cracks. So she keeps me, uh, she, she'll remind me after about three or four days if I haven't responded to something. So it helps a lot. Uh, we also have Molly Knew. Molly has, uh, taken, uh, taken the, uh, criminal part of the practice to a whole new level. She, uh, she does, uh, more than I actually ever knew until before I started to be involved a little bit more in the criminal side. Um, I go to her and ask her what's the statutes mean sometime on the criminal side. And so she usually knows the answer. She works terrific with, uh, with staff, uh, and really just a lot of things that I don't even, I don't even have to see or realize and it just gets done. So I, I wanted to thank her. Uh, we have Jeff who, we, we aren't allowed to be in the, uh, in the, in due for a few minutes anyways. Uh, he's, uh, he's referred to as Joffrey over at the, uh, over at the police department. And he's doing a lot of the city prosecution or all of the city prosecution. And he'll also be doing a lot of the code review. We've actually already started that. He's already, uh, redlined a copy of the, uh, some revisions to our nuisance code and, uh, and some of the enforcement code. And we'll be bringing some of that stuff. Um, after Chief Stevenson and others have a chance to look at it, we'll be bringing that, uh, to the council just for some updates. If you look through the code, you realize that some things haven't been updated since like the eighties. So we'll be, uh, we'll be looking at some of that. Uh, in it, you know, over the next, you know, seriously, over the next three years, it's really going to take that long to get through everything. And also everybody, uh, knows the honorable, uh, Jessica Meyer, uh, Justice Court Judge and my partner, uh, with Morley Thomas. And just so you all know, you know, she, this is her first time on a ballot. So, you know, she was pretty, she, she made me, uh, text her a copy of the, uh, ballot so she could see her name on the ballot. So hopefully nobody wrote in some other name because she's the only one, uh, running for a justice court judge. So we are available for any questions. I thought it was important that everybody just meets, uh, you know, the whole firm. Um, and just to tell you that we really appreciate this contract. We appreciate the relationship and hopefully it's, uh, beneficial to the city because it is, and we appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, Trey. Any comments? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with the city attorney. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. The contract is approved and the motion passes. Number three, approval of addendum number one to tourism services agreement with the Lebanon Area Chamber of Commerce, presented by Ron Whitlatch, our interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So, uh, this is probably one of the, uh, first impacts the city's seen financially with the, uh, COVID-19 outbreak. And it, it has to do with the transient room tax, which is how, uh, the chamber agreement is funded. Um, so we've been working with the chamber and the chamber director to come up with a plan to move forward next year. You see that, uh, $35,000 a year is for operations and $50,000 is for administration of, of tourism grants. That's the, uh, current contract, uh, what that states. So we've been working to come up with an addendum, uh, since there is a shortage. There's probably an 80 to 90% revenue reduction in the transient room tax right now. Um, we're looking to see when that's going to come back. But, uh, one of the things that, uh, we did is to, they're going to, we're proposing to modify this contract. Allow the chamber to use the tourism grants to cover the operating costs that they have currently, uh, with them and for the next two quarters. And then reassess, uh, where we're at at the end of those two quarters. Um, and put that, uh, put that money back into it and honor that agreement as we get the money back into it. So with that, we're recommending council approve the chamber, uh, addendum. And I can take any questions.
I would add, uh, if I can, um, I of course will be recusing myself from this vote. So for the record, I am not voting. Uh, so we did talk about, um, we just, you know, we didn't talking to Ron and that, we, we said, let's take the next two quarters. We'll take in zero. So that's the, the new contract or the addendum reflects that. And then sometime in September, we'll probably look to see, you know, what do we know about, uh, you know, we'll know a little bit more about how the economy is opening up. Is there anybody at a hotel? Are we gonna, are we going to have an influx of, of people again? Because we may need to come back to council with a new amendment at that time. Because originally, you know, we, we really think this next year could be very challenging. So, um, we'll probably come back sometime in September, wouldn't you think, Ron?
Yeah, I think that's what it, uh, says in the actual agreement was we would come back. I think this runs through, um, Matt, if you're on, what, what was the date on that? Do you remember?
I believe it's September 30th.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure. I, I have a copy of the, um, of the signed contract on our behalf. I'll bring to city hall tomorrow, assuming council approves this action.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the contract on September 30th.
Okay. Yeah, I just found it too.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I, I understand the amendment and we're taking the, what would be grant money and we're applying it towards operating costs. And then if I'm understanding correctly, then we're going to reassess on September 30th. For what?
To see what we do in the future because we're accepting zero money in. So if, uh, I, we're not the only obligation for that money. Obviously you guys could address that. The chamber is not the only obligation. So we'll have to say, okay, we'll, we will fund you a, a, a lower amount maybe. If now we're getting revenue in, but the city can't fulfill the original contract, then we'll negotiate behind the scenes and bring to council what, what it is that the chamber can live with and the city can live with. Uh, it's still trying to meet all of the obligations.
Is there any, um, catch up with this or retroactivity? That, that would be my only concern of how, is there a way for this to somehow negatively affect us moving forward? Or, or maybe Matt or Ron could address that, but, or Rebecca?
No, I, Counselor Boland, I don't think so. I, I, I think what you have is you have some grant funds that weren't issued this year, right? So, so those funds are going to be used for operation. Obviously we're not in a time where you can put any tourism grant funds out on the street right now anyway. So I think what Rebecca is getting at is, is when we get to September, sometime in September, after these quarters have, have gone through, is looking at everything again. And we may need to modify the actual agreement. This is just a kind of a, a short addendum to get us through. Uh, since everything's so fluid and moving targets, we really don't, I don't know what it's going to look like in September. So, uh, this was, this was to do that. So that's where we would come back to the council and have that discussion. Is it, you know, do we change it? Are, are, you know, is tourism coming back enough? So are we going to add more grants to it? You know, are we going to continue with the operational costs? Or are we going to go, you know, there, there's a multitude of, of things that could happen there. But in the interim, uh, yeah.
Oh, sorry. From the chamber's perspective, um, when we roll around to next spring, uh, actually kind of late winter and as we, we get into spring, uh, assuming we're going to be able to have events again next year, so many businesses, not businesses, nonprofits, events, um, that are not happening this year are going to be desperate for some of those funds. So we would like to, like, when we talk about this in September, if we can't fund it 100%, we're going to at least say, look, we want to, we want to build some money back up to be able to get money back out to the community. So.
Okay.
But there's nothing on, as far as we're concerned, there's nothing retroactive. We're not going to come back to you in October and say, okay, where's the money that, that, you know, that we agreed.
And then I would be just remiss if I didn't ask Matt and Trey, um, legally and ethically, the way that these funds are, are deemed or appropriated. Everything we're doing with this is considered appropriate and there's no, um, potential for us to receive any kind of, I mean, you can always receive backlash, but there's no potential for us to be uh, questioned on the way that these grant funds are being used outside of their intended scope. It's fully within our ability and, and the rest of the council feels good with that.
Yeah. I mean, really, we don't have to use them for grant funds. That's what we've chosen to do for tourism. Um, certainly that is in line with, uh, with the chamber, uh, helping with the chamber, um, to use the funds in that way. So I don't see any problem at all.
You agree with that? You're nodding?
I, I agree. Um, the, the city actually has quite a bit of flexibility from, from what I understand with a lot of the transient tax that we have. Uh, we only have to, the newest 3% that the city started doing, it, 70% of that amount has to be used for tourism. Outside of that, the city actually has the ability to use it for what they want. I think in the original code, that's kind of what the, the purpose of it was to begin with. But that can be a lot of different things. There's not a specific one thing that it has to be used for.
Okay. I just want to be as transparent as possible to the public and make sure that, that the taxpayers understand that, that what, what's happening with their money and how it's being used and that, that there's no question to that. There's no, there's no question on their minds as to the appropriateness of this move. So I, that answers my questions. Thank you.
So just to summarize, it's basically, uh, the transient room tax has been basically devastated at this point. There just isn't any. And so it's an adjustment to reflect that with the chamber and our agreement with the chamber because we had set out a specific amount. I think it was a, a, a set amount. And that would hurt us a lot at this point. And we just don't have that money. So that, that was the main reason. I'm just kind of summarizing. Is that correct, Rebecca? I just want to make.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
I move to approve the addendum.
So good.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, tourism agreement with the Lebanon Area Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. The motion passes. And last up, we have the city managers report. Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, I was requested by Counselor Boland to read each line of the entire report tonight. So please, yeah, do that. No, I won't do that. Uh, if you got any questions about it, um, I'm more than happy to, to cover any of that. Um, couple of updates. Obviously we're, we're hoping to move into, uh, phase one of the state's reopening. We have been putting together policies, um, for that procedures of how we're going to handle it, building by building, uh, and, and what that looks like. We don't have it completely nailed down yet, but I'm guessing by tomorrow, Friday, we'll have that nailed down in hopes that, uh, um, you know, that, that's going to happen. Um, I guess to give you a little bit of an insight, some of the things we're looking at is, is very limited hours or by appointment only, uh, here at city hall, uh, to the public. Just until we get through this first phase, you know, it's going to go. Uh, kind of gets, for lack of better terms, slow roll into it a little bit, uh, rather than just opening it up. Um, and then staff will still be able to work some from, from home. That's some of the guidance that we're getting in this phase one is, is telecommute if you can. Um, so we're doing some of that. Um, likely going to extend the emergency declaration for the city, uh, this week. It expires on the 15th. Um, I think we'll probably run that out. So I, I want to say July 6th. Um, just in line with, with what the governor is doing. That doesn't really, all it means is that we, we can flex schedules. Uh, it allows us the ability to, um, also apply for any monies that are available out there with us being in a state of emergency. So, um, with that, uh, we do have one piece of good news. I'm going to let Kelly touch on that. It's a, it's a proposed grant opportunity and I'll let her kind of touch on that a little bit.
Thanks. Um, so I don't know how many have seen the, the efforts of local communities or, or counties um, and regions that are trying to establish a, um, grant or loan opportunity for struggling businesses. Um, and Alicia Rogers, our economic development catalyst, has, uh, been very passionate about trying to find some funding opportunities um, for us to, to get into the game here. Um, she has done a, a pretty incredible job of finding some available opportunities where it would be a very low buy-in for the city. Um, and we would get a pretty significant return. There are still, um, grant opportunities and we would have to sort of stack a couple of them together and leverage them, um, in different phases and different grants. Um, but if we do. Um, but if we do that, it would be a a pretty much a a a significant amount of money that we would be able to to get. Depending on how much the city's uh low buy-in would would entail. So nothing is finalized yet. Um, but I think we have some pretty significant chances of of moving forward with it, which means we'd be able to provide a. A great funding source for for our local community. In addition to that, she has found a way for us to not have to administer. The program, uh, which means that it's not going to cause additional staff time, and we also are not going to be. The individuals that are making the decision of which business gets the funding versus which does not. Um, that was pretty important for all of us. We didn't want to be the ones to say no. Um, and and so it's it's still being put together, but she's done a pretty great job in in finding ways to take a a little tiny nugget. And make it into something pretty big. So um, no guarantees, but it it's looking like like we're going to have something to work with here.
Great.
I would say also with her, she's been really great about, I you know, we're all kind of zooming and tuning in and trying to get as much information as we can. And she's been really great about aggressively getting out there, trying to find information, sharing it with the chamber. So that we can then pass along whatever we can to our members. So she's just, she she is, she's working it.
Yes, she is.
Good.
Uh, I think that's it. No, I think that's it unless anybody's got any questions.
Any questions for city manager? There, city manager. Okay, seeing none. Move on to items from council. Um, I'll go ahead and start. I got two quick items. Uh, one, right before we met, I got a message from the governor's office, our Mid Valley Coordinator. Uh, please see announcement of immediate advisory for tomorrow at ten AM. Feel free to reach out with any questions and then attaches a press release and the title of the press release is Governor Kate Brown to announce counties entering phase one of reopening. So that it looks like tomorrow at ten, the counties are going to be announced that are going to be allowed to open. So that'll be an interesting time tomorrow at ten. Um, and I posted that on my mayor's web page or uh Facebook page, so that that's there for you to read if you're interested. And um, real sad note, uh, I don't know if you know Randy Peterson, the uh director of the, well, he was the director of the um soup kitchen. Uh, has passed away and it was sudden and it was a shock to everybody. Uh, and it just really feel horrible for him, his family, um, the staff over there in the church. Um, he he's just had a heart and a passion for our homeless and the folks that needed help. And uh, it's just really sad. Um, I I consider him a friend and uh he was always giving me updates and telling me how great they were doing. And he was always so excited and passionate. So. Um, that's tough. And uh, there's a uh GoFundMe, I believe it is, uh, to help his wife uh with expenses and things since she's kind of left. In a lurch at this point. So that's what I have. Any other counselor comments? Jason?
Yeah, I I just want to make a quick comment and uh thank Chief Stevenson and his um police staff. For uh their handling of the uh, there was a uh kind of a cruisin' event that went down. Uh, last weekend and I I, from what I heard, uh. Officers did a really good job of addressing the situation, protecting everyone's First Amendment rights and his rights to protest peacefully. Uh, but also addressing some concerns with the participants that might have helped to educate them for how to have a successful protest. Uh, in the future. And so I appreciate that uh input from you and your staff. I know it was extra work. Uh, and you guys do a great job and I want to recognize you for that. So thank you.
Yeah, and Chief, if you could give a word, go ahead. Now, I just got to say, Chief, if you could give a word and just kind of kind of share what you guys are doing and and what future plans are uh. And maybe what happened, however you want to cover that.
Um, sure. Um, yeah, it uh it was one of those uh issues where um. You know, we learned of it and we're dealing with it and doing our best to deal with it appropriately, all in my, all in while trying to keep the uh First Amendment rights uh of uh of that going. But um, what we what we are, what we did is follow up is went out and contacted um most of the, or tried to identify and contact a lot of the participants, let them know. Um, you know, some activities that we are witnessing are going, are not going to be allowed. And you know, how do you, there's a right way to do things and a wrong way. And we want to make sure we educate um them as as far as that goes. But you know, in hearing that there's going to be um ongoing weekend events such as this obviously caused us some concern. So we wanted to make sure that we communicated with this group and also communicated with our partnering agencies, let them know that, hey, this could be coming to your town. And this is kind of what we were dealing with. Um, so all in all, the communication's gone um well. Um, hopefully, it won't get to the level that it did on, I believe it was Saturday night, that that uh, when we were getting notified and and witnessing what was going on. So um, all in all, hopefully, uh, this doesn't happen again. And if it does happen, it's done in a peaceful and respectful and within the law. So. Uh, and that's that's the key thing. As long as people are being safe and um, you know, and doing it within the law, then. You know, we're not going to interrupt that. But when it becomes to a point where it becomes dangerous and things were going on, then you know, obviously, we're going to. Uh, step in and make sure that this type of activity doesn't happen. So but hats off to my to my um, the officers and the sergeants that that dealt with this. Um, they saw it and jumped right on it and um. Did it did just an outstanding job in addressing the issue. And I couldn't be more prouder of of the sergeant, Sergeant Sheets, Sergeant Podway, you know, all all the staff here, Sergeant Weber. Um, that that addressed the issue and and all the officers that were there that night too. So I appreciate you, the kind words, Jason.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it and and appreciate all their work and and it was a tough situation. Uh, and I just want to be clear to the public, uh, that in the statement that I made, uh, I in no way was telling people not to assemble. Uh, the biggest problem that we had, just like the chief mentioned, are when it turned into things that were going to hurt people or things that uh. Were illegal. And and that's what we don't want. Uh, if you choose to cruise, that's a great idea. In fact, I was really happy when I heard that that was happening. Uh, it wasn't until it was the video surfaced of the the burnouts in the middle of the street and some of the things were very, very dangerous and and illegal. Um, and that's the problem. It's not the meeting. It's not the getting out, having a barbecue or whatever you want to do or, you know. Um, that's your personal thing. If if you want to do that, fine. But uh, if once it becomes private property and trespassing and those like, it, we just can't have that happen in town. So thank you, Chief. Um, thanks, uh, Jason. Appreciate that. Any other uh comments from council? Did I hear a? Thought I heard something. Okay, maybe not. Okay, at this point, uh, is the press on? Do we have the? Anybody questions from the press?
No, we were expecting uh Sean from the Lebanon local, and he did not join.
Okay, okay. Seeing that, uh, next scheduled meeting will be June tenth, twenty twenty, six PM. Uh, City Council next regular meeting. And at this point, we are going to uh move into executive session. And uh, anybody else that's on the line that is not on the council, uh, will need to get off of the Zoom, unzoom. I don't know what you call it, de-zoom. And uh, and then we'll move into the executive session, and I'll have Trey read that information. Uh, okay, we'll be back in opening the regular session. Call the session to order at uh seven fifty-three PM. And at this point, um, we've discussed some of the specifics on city manager recruitment process. Uh, but in open session, we want to talk about this uh and discuss the details of our city manager recruitment process. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion uh to go forward with the process.
I'd like to make a motion to bring in the top two city manager candidates for in-person interviews at the end of June. If Lynn County enters phase two of the reopening Oregon process.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded uh for the top two people in person. Can you finish that again for me? Michelle, I'm sorry. I didn't write it down.
The top two city manager candidates for in-person interviews at the end of June. If Lynn County enters phase two of the reopening Oregon process.
I'm just writing that down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have that. Now it will open up for discussion. Rebecca?
I'm a uh, I'm a no, because I I believe that during phase one, I mean, I think it may not ma- matter because. Let's say we get to phase two, uh, we we started phase one on Friday, twenty-one days later, phase two. If it was a perfect world, I just don't like our decision to be predicated if we don't enter into phase two until December. Say, your motion puts us to December before we can even pick the process up again, and we're coming up on a year of not having a city manager. And I believe that there are workarounds that we could make, we can come to a good decision or at least move forward without waiting for phase two. So I'm just going to respectfully disagree.
Okay.
If I may.
Go ahead, Michelle.
We've, thank you. We put this process on hold already twice. Um, once was over the holidays last year and again, because we wanted to make sure that this person wasn't starting during the middle of a, while while budget was still being formed. I would advocate that during a pandemic that um, we don't get to set the timeline. And this is one of those situations where it's probably worth putting a pause. And that's why I did phrase it as phase two.
I agree with that.
Okay, Robert, thank you. And Jason?
Uh, I'm in agreeance with the phase two. Uh, for me, it's an issue of uh constituent involvement and also the involvement of our. Our uh city's uh staff and state directors, department directors. I think it's important for our public uh to be involved in this public process that has always been pushed here in Lebanon. Um, that's something that we. Uh, we stand behind all the time with all of our selections, and I don't want to see that change. So. Um, I agree that it might be twenty-one days from now, we might be rising to version phase two, and that would be fantastic. And if it takes a few extra days. To to get this done, uh, or a few extra weeks, it's an important enough decision for our city and for the people of our city. That we take the time to do this right, not just do this quickly.
And I guess I would, I would clarify that public involvement for me is the next phase, this next process that we're going through. Uh, I I did not see as a public, uh, as the point in time where we involve the public.
Right, and this, this motion is not for the public event. This is for our interview process to narrow it down to who would be in the public event. So I understand what Jason's saying. But um, this motion is not about the public part of it, and I think that's an important part, but that's after this next step. Basically, we're just, we would be um eliminating candidates and choosing the top candidates that we might want to move forward with or not at that point. Jason?
If I may, uh, we have, we've gone from five to two. Uh, so we we have eliminated down, and this is, this is historically the time when we would have uh multiple interview panels. That would encompass uh city council, would encompass public stakeholders or community stakeholders, would encompass the city directors. Those were all the things that would be part of this next round typically. So uh.
Yes.
This also gives us the flexibility to uh potentially schedule some sort of a um public event as well. At in in the same time parameters, should the council find that's a approved decision. Uh, we may have the uh the freedom to involve more of the public under phase two. We would certainly have much more than we would under phase one. So again, this decision gives us greater flexibility to carry out the process as we normally would be doing without the pandemic.
Okay, Rebecca?
Yeah, I was just thinking, uh, I, this next round for me was about getting to be able to, because normally. We would have already met in person with our candidates. And that, to me, is what we as an interview panel need to do before we even decide. I think by the time you bring the public in, we're saying, look, we're, here's our final two, pick one. And then we may say, oh, we we didn't like anybody in person, right? So. Um.
We may, yeah.
I, yeah, for me, it just wasn't about the the public part of it. I think. I've said my piece of voice.
Okay, uh, Karen?
A couple of things. So I I don't feel by not wanting to. Waiting to phase two would be great, but what I worry is Rebecca made a very good point. The way the motion is written. If we don't ever get out of phase two until September, that means we have to wait until September. And I don't necessarily think that's the way that we need to do it. I I think there, you know. The Police Academy is a great example of, you know, this is not like a non-essential position. This is our commander in chief for our city, and I don't feel like we're rushing it. But I also feel like if we, if we say phase two has to be in place, and again, it doesn't happen till September. Um, I don't see a value. I would like the option to then be able at the end of June, that gives it way past the twenty-one days. That if we could, uh, and are qualifying, because you don't even know what phase two looks like. It's not even been announced. And so we're going on all all these what ifs. And so I would like the feeling of being able to relook at it at the end of June. What does this look like? And how can we do this? If we could do, I I hear you. Let me finish my sentence, because you guys all got to talk already. Um, if we're able to figure out how to being recruits back to the Police Academy and keep our our six-foot, you know, separation and and wear masks. And do this and move the classrooms completely into into the firearms area so that we have all this space. I think we could do something very similar in our city. You know, we said we've always done this. Well, you know what? This is something new. And so we're going to have to be able to adapt and move and make some changes. And I'm not saying not involving the public. I don't agree with that. I think that's a really nice thing that Lebanon offers. But I think we need to be able to adapt on our feet and look at it. And I and I just feel like with the motion, it just says, boom. We can never do anything until phase two arrives, and our governor hasn't even told us what that looks like yet.
Okay, Trey, I know that you had something. Hold on, Michelle, please.
I just want to say that, I mean, when I heard that motion, I wouldn't interpret it that way. Um, and and I kind of want this on the record. That I would interpret the motion, the way it was read and written and then read, is that we will hold those interviews if we're in, if we're in phase two. If we're not, there is nothing wrong with addressing this issue again and modifying uh the the process going forward at that same meeting. Um, I don't, I don't, I certainly don't, uh, would not be in my interpretation of that motion that uh we can't address this issue again until we're in phase two.
As long as that's the case, Trey, then I totally agree.
Okay, Michelle?
And we can, you you know, Trey's right, obviously. Of course, we can address this again if we're not at at into phase two by the end of June. But this um, this position pays one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year for city manager. We're furloughing, you know, staff at the library and senior center. And those people might not, I don't know what that looks like until phase two opens up. And I have a hard problem hiring somebody for that amount of money while we're furloughing. Senior center and library employees at the same, in the same breath. So yes, I am really pushing hard for phase two, and that's part of the reason why as well.
Any other, uh, Ron?
So I I can I cl- I get some clarification? I I've heard several things. Um, and I just more for uh the staff moving forward. Um, you, one of, one of the things, so I am I assuming that we're not involving the public in this next. Round of interviews, because it is important to know that, um, to try and schedule that. Um, are it it's excellent, just another round to go through? Or are we trying to put the groups together, Jason, as you were suspecting or or said? Um, because that does make a difference in how we uh schedule things. Um, you know, what's open, what's not. I I I I kind of need to know that from our side so that we can, we can plan for that.
Just, uh, hold on just one second, Jason. Uh, just a point of clarification too, is that, you know, we have met with, uh, this is just for the public. We have met with uh three candidates and we've narrowed it down to two. But the problem was with the two, we did it on Zoom. Uh, we couldn't even see, many of the counselors couldn't see, I couldn't see the actual body language and the candidate on the other camera because of technical problems. So my feeling was, and and I think this is what the other candidate, the other counselors wanted, but you can speak for yourself. Is that to bring in those two people in person, so we could see as a council, if we even want to go further. That was what um, uh, Bill, I believe the the consultant we had was talking about. And that was what my understanding was that we wanted to do, not do the whole public event until we were sure that these were even good candidates. Why bring the public in if we're not even happy with the the candidates we have? I I want to make sure that I can meet these people and make a decision better than just on a Zoom meeting that that everybody felt very uncomfortable with. Uh, Jason?
And the city staff.
And the city staff.
And the city staff, yeah, yeah. I did not mean to forget them, but city staff needs to see them in person too, I feel, because they didn't have a good response. Uh, good experience like, uh, just like we did too. So go ahead, Jason.
I I agree with you. And I I I think, uh, I may have misspoke when I, when I spoke earlier, but uh, I, the phase two is what gives us the ability to have a larger public event, most likely, uh, that could be beneficial. And I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to do it at the same time. Uh, I agree, we should bring these two back. Uh, you know, we've gone from, we went from four, not three, but went from four, uh, to two. And then, uh, so now we're at the, at at two. And we need to decide if these two are are going to move forward in the process and then what that process looks like. So that was, um,
Okay.
That was my intent, uh, but also the fact that phase two allows us for that larger gathering, that larger group that could involve, uh, all the appropriate city staff, directors and members that want to be there. And most importantly, all the members of the public who wanted to participate and have, uh, uh, some sort of a, whether it's a meet and greet or a mask and greet, whatever it's going to be, uh, some sort of ability to bump elbows with their their possible next city manager.
Okay.
Okay, that gives me some clarification. I just wanted to make sure I understood that just from a logistics standpoint and and how we would plan for the, plan for the event, meeting or whatever. I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, Ron. I mashed, I mashed multiple ideas together and I I'm sure I confused you. I apologize.
I personally didn't specify who in the motion, um, that would be with, for the in-person interviews.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I said, I did not, I left it open in the motion, so we could decide that here.
Okay.
It's worded as in-person interviews, not necessarily that the the who is ambiguous.
Right.
For debate.
Okay. Karen?
So I so to understand how how this is, the way that the motion is, the two candidates would not be able to come for the counselors and the staff to do the interviewing and the meeting until phase two. Is that how that is?
Correct. Well,
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, because I I kind of feel like that it's like normally, we would have done all this stuff in person, right? And then we'd be ready to be do it all, the, you know, the candidates down to two. And then here we are, you know, like the fire, uh, district did. And then you had X candidates and we were able to go in and meet them. And but because of the media that we had to use to do the interviews, it was awkward. And so now we're having to do sort of an extra step to make for sure, for sure, you know, what do we feel like with these two remaining candidates? And can we do an in-person? And on that one, I think we absolutely have the ability to control to have, if we are allowed to do af- as of Friday, if we make phase one, that we can have a a couple of different times. You know, you have the morning session is with this 25 of, you know, city staff and counselors. And the afternoon session is this many. Um, to then allow then for us to decide are do we want to go forward with these two candidates and then to move forward? And I, and I feel like
Mr. Mayor, I feel like we're moving backwards. Uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second. I feel like we're moving backwards in discussing a new motion. We need to keep our discussion on the motion on the floor and
Okay. I was just trying to understand.
This is discussion and it's it's open. I mean, we're not going backwards. She hasn't made another amendment or anything like that. So I think at this point, I think we're good. And I think it's something that we should discuss until we're done and and ready to to vote.
No, I agree. I feel like we're going backwards on, on, uh, the motion. I'm ready to vote.
Trey, did you have something?
No, I actually, my, my computer froze for a little while, so I missed the end of my counselor starters. But, uh, um, I mean, if we're looking at rules of, rules of order, somebody can call the question. But I mean, we haven't done that in a long time. So it's up to council whether we continue the discussion or not.
I call for the question.
Okay, question's been called. It's been, uh, moved and seconded. Uh, and Michelle, I would ask you to read it again since it's your your motion.
Hey, let me see if I can do this one more time. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to bring in the top two city manager candidates for in-person interviews at the end of June if Lynn County enters phase two of the reopening Oregon process.
Okay, the question's been called. Uh, in that case, we're going to do a roll call vote and I'll have
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Technically, the question, the call, the question has to have a second.
You're breaking up, Trey.
Second. Somebody needs a second to call the question.
Oh, okay. And I, I think I heard Robert second.
He called.
I called it.
Oh, Jason's second, okay. This Zoom is fun.
Right?
Not so much. Okay. All right. So we got a second. Uh, all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, that's just I'm calling.
This is just calling the question, yes.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Okay, so call the question. So at this point, then we will move forward on the vote. Uh, we have the motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor of the motion that, uh, Counselor Stainable did, uh, I'm sorry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Actually, I apologize. We're going to do a roll call vote if Kim, uh, would come on, our clerk, and and do the roll call.
Counselor Bolen?
Yes.
Counselor Furlough?
Yes.
Counselor Grizzle?
No.
Counselor Stouter?
No.
Counselor Steinhebel?
Yes.
Okay, uh, with this, the motion passes. And we will, we will then, uh, plan forward. Uh, Ron, you have marching orders from the staff. Uh, is there any questions you have of us?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So when we say the end of June, I mean, we do want to make sure we plan this out. Are we trying to hit the last council meeting in June? Or is that, because that is the last week of June. So that means Monday or Tuesday of that week?
Yeah, I would, I would say whenever we can get everybody together and and do it. And and we do normally do that second meeting of the month, uh, if we're going to have it. Um, so I think uh, uh, unless council decides different, that, uh, we just do it to the convenience of when we can get that scheduled in the end.
June 22nd, 23rd, somewhere there is what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's, what was the date?
I think so.
I look at my calendar here.
24th would be our regular second meeting.
Correct. Yeah, 24th would be that Wednesday. That would probably be kind of our normal time. But, uh, somebody had mentioned earlier, I don't think it locks us into that date if we had to do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday. You know, unless somebody's just got some scheduling conflicts and we could really be flexible on that. I think it would be really, uh, up to us to find where we could get the candidates together on the particular day.
Yeah.
Not together.
We'll shoot for that. We'll, we'll shoot on the 22nd or 23rd. And for the interviews, that's, we'll work that angle and then just, uh, just so for everybody's, we'll, we'll plan for the 24th meeting. And just kind of keep it there and we'll adjust if we need to.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Anybody have? I, I just want to say thank you to all of you, even those who have differing opinions. And that's one of the awesome things about working with you guys on council, uh, that I love, that I can go and, uh, have a beer. Well, you know, maybe after COVID. But, yeah, no, I know you, Jason. Uh, but thank you so much. And I really do appreciate that. And it means a lot. Uh, we're all passionate about this. That's why we're here. Um, sometimes this job sucks and sometimes it's really fun. Uh, but I just appreciate all of you and all your support. Um, thanks for the, again, just, just being, uh, fair to everybody and and, uh, not taking personal sides on things. So, um, I know we all have the best for the community in our, um, in our sights. And, uh, we are going to, uh, get through this process, uh, as long as it seems like it's been. So thank you again, everybody. And with that, we'll go ahead. Oh, was there a question?
No, I was just saying bye.
Okay, yep, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.